Ashkosh Council Meeting. Will please call the roll.
Erickson.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Mugleror.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Miller.
Bojehowski.
Here.
Paul Mary.
Here.
Present six.
And Councilmember Erickson will lead us in the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we honor those who have come before us, including the original stewards of this area, the Menominee and Hochunk nations. May our decisions tonight improve the quality of life in our city and for our residents.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation unabowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this evening, I believe Mr. Youngbacher is here for a presentation on Morgan Crossing Phase Two. Welcome.
Thank you for allowing me to give you a presentation on Morgan Crossing Phase Two. I had presented something to previous council. The composition of the council has changed, but planning staff asked me to come back and give you an update on what's being proposed. We have a submission, and I believe you have hard copies in front of you, and we'll run through this very quickly. If you have questions, it would be my honor to answer them for you. Again, my name is Peter Youngbacher. My business address is 300 North Main Street in Ashkosh. Our company is Alexander &amp; Bishop Properties. And we're here to talk about Morgan Crossing Phase Two. The project is an 83-unit, five-story, multifamily apartment building with underground parking that would be located generally at Riverway and Pearl Avenue in the redevelopment district that began about 20 years ago. We built, just by way of background, the Concord Place project in 2003, the first multifamily project in that district. Morgan Crossing Phase One was constructed in 2008, 51 units. And we're now proposing to build on the remaining land, 83 units. Composition of the project is depicted on the second page, if we can go back to that for a minute, is primarily ones and twos. We have a limited number of studios in the project. The rents that we're proposing average somewhere in the $1.40 a square foot range. We're proposing, as part of our amenity package, to have a fairly deep list of amenities. We'll have individual washers and dryers, individual HVAC systems, stainless steel appliances, brand countertops. We do have underground parking, as we did with the first phase with Morgan Crossing. And that, I think, is important, as we look at some pictures later in the presentation, it'll show you that we're able to accomplish a bit more density for the project and, I think, accomplish the goals that were originally outlined for the district. Previously in the market, we have developed a number of properties, and I'm just presenting this by way of context for new council members, as to what we've done in the community. River Place was an earlier project done in the 80s on a site that had been part of the Payne Arboretum. It's 117 units. Concord, which we referred to earlier, 57 units. Morgan Crossing, 51 units. We also took the former Menards site and repositioned it with a number of national retail tenants that had not been in the market previously, and have done a variety of smaller projects. We're in the last stages of completing a fairly substantial rehabilitation of University of Lost, which received an award from the PACE group and from Focus on Energy last year for environmental sustainability. The next slide has an image of the site, just to summarize you again with its location. It's in the area that is rapidly infilling with additional multifamily projects. The next slide has a couple of drone shots that were recently taken, giving you some context for the Brio project immediately to the east, the Annex project immediately to the south, both of which do not have underground parking. If you look at those pictures, I think you'll see how the parking fields need to expand in size as a consequence of not being able to park underground. So parking underground, we have found, is a very important amenity to maintain a competitive advantage for the property. The next slide has a site plan showing our parking and how it's integrated into the first phase of Morgan Crossing. Again, we have about 40 surface stalls. The bulk of our stalls are underground and protected. The next slide has some representative photos of the finishing quality. Again, we have in-suite washers and dryers. We have separate HVAC systems. We're using hard surfaces in all of our wet areas, stainless steel appliances, ceiling fans. We also have nine-foot ceilings, higher than what you normally see in the market. Next slide is the Morgan Crossing Phase One, which has some representative pictures of the landscaping. You go back to the very front side, you see a picture that has no elevation landscaping on it, and it's also lifted up. One of the issues we have to deal with here is subsurface soil conditions and water. So the building does have to be elevated a bit to accommodate those conditions. And again, the next slide, I think, addresses that. It somewhat distorts the view. All that lower-level block is really not exposed at the end of the day. The next slide has the underground parking. We have, in addition to that, bicycle storage and other amenities to assist with electric car charging stations. The next slide is floor number one. We also have, as part of our initiative for this particular project, we are designing it to obtain the L-E-E-D Gold status. It will be the first multifamily project apart from Horizon Village in the city to have that status. So I think it's important, and we know it's important as developers, to focus on sustainability. The built environment tends to generate 35% to 45% of carbon emissions in any particular community, and our goal here is to make this project as neutral as possible. That includes not only the building envelope, but the kinds of things that our residents tend to do remotely to control energy consumption and to monitor it. We'll also have receiving areas in the building for delivery of packages, both cold food product and dry product. And we'll be using triple-pane windows at the project as well. The next three or four slides are just representative samples of the floor layout and the plans. We've had a decade of market feedback from Morgan Crossing Phase Two to get some sense for what works and what doesn't work, and we tried to integrate that into the latest design for this project. About five slides down, we have a brief presentation on PACE financing, and I know we've talked to several council members in the past about this. PACE is an acronym that stands for Property Assessment and Energy. It's administered by an agency that is created out of the Department of Energy and adopted by statute in the state of Wisconsin, among other states. We have used PACE financing in other projects, including the first multifamily redevelopment project, which was the project that we showed you earlier, the University of Lost project in the state of Wisconsin, and we're proposing to use that here as well. It allows us to dig deep into the sustainability bucket and use a number of things, again, to reduce the carbon footprint for the project. The last slide is just a brief summary about TIF. We are incurring a number of site costs that increase the project development. The most important one is underground parking. As we indicated, the Brio and the Annex do not have underground parking. They made decisions based on costs not to include it. I think underground parking is very much part of what the original mission and goal of the council was when they created the plan for this district, and we're proposing to include it. And I think it's an important amenity to have, to provide competitive, best-in-class housing for not only our community, but for the people who are living in the project. We've also had to contend with the American Transmission Corporation, and ATC has a power line that runs through this district. We've been struggling with them for 18 months, which is one of the reasons we're here a year later from where we were before. We finally come to a resolution with them. It's going to cost us some money, but it allows us to move forward with the project. We also have some environmental soils conditions, which are common to the area, that are adding to cost. So we're looking at a 15-year TIF. We're about $2.25 million, a 95% repayment, 5% for city administration costs. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions by council? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Would you mind a question or two?
Not at all.
From the last time you were here, the project's gotten a little bigger.
Yes.
Can you remind council and our new ones, roughly where were you at in terms of units before, and then the ask before as well?
We added a floor to the project, in part because we were experiencing higher costs per unit, and the budget didn't work. As you may recall, previous council members had the ability to look at the ELLRS study that was done to justify the TIF Book Four test, and ELLRS was, I think, scratching their head a bit, saying, you know, what's motivating this developer to do this deal based on the numbers that we see? So part of it was a response to that, and we added a floor, which added about, I think we went from 65 to 83 units, 17 units. We also incurred some additional costs because of the fireproofing around the building. We have to use a different type of wood as we go up from the podium, so part of that was offset by that. Fortunately, from when I think I last made an appearance here and also had a conversation with the RDA, lumber prices have come down and moderated, and that's helping us close the gap on numbers. But the problem still persists, and it's not just us, it's everyone who's facing the calculus of how to build these projects with the costs that we face versus the rents that we can achieve. And there is a gap. The gap's not going away. Fortunately, there's been a little bit of a dip in interest rates, which helps in the modeling, but can't count on that being there by the time we place our permanent debt.
If I remember right, you were probably in the 1 point...
Oh, I'm sorry. In answering, it was about 1.8, 1.85. We've refined costs for the underground parking, and unfortunately, it's come back much more expensive as a result of what the COVID world has done to us, and it's also causing a delay. We have to place an order and go hard on span treat, and it's not 12 weeks anymore, it's 20 to 24 weeks, which stretches out the construction time period and adds additional costs for construction period interest before you start receiving a completed project.
Appreciate the info. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just had a quick question, going back to the overview on the slide with the layout. The underground parking, would it be your intention that that would be surface parking on top of underground parking, or green space on top of the underground parking?
The underground parking is located underneath the first floor, so it's within the building envelope. In addition to the underground parking, we have the surface parking, which would be on a slide or two, maybe four of that there.
Yes, that's the one I was looking at.
About 40 surface stalls and about 60 underground stalls, 67 underground stalls.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate the time.
Very well.
Thank you.
All right, next we have citizen statements to council. Citizens are to address the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes. Must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda. Do we have anyone registered for citizen statements that are not on the agenda?
Yes, we do. We have three individuals. Our first speaker is Marie Weber.
Yes, if you would step forward. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you again for hearing from me. I think I sent some of this to you guys earlier. So this is regarding the Ninth flooding that we've been having in the last eight, nine months, and I did some research on what we got going on, and I got six bullet points I wanted to touch base with today. I did do some more research on the CIP that we got going on through Ashkosh, and I wanted to know how the water utilities that we have with the flooding is incorporated into the CIP, because I did not see anything regarding our flooding that's going on on Ninth Street. I see we're going to redo Ninth Street. I see all that, but I don't see where the sewer and the flooding is being addressed during that with the CIP. So I'd like to have someone maybe respond to me on that eventually. And if that cannot be addressed, if our sewer backup issue cannot be addressed within the CIP timeframe, then I was hoping that the City of Ashkosh would find a temporary solution until we could do that, because we've had flooding, you know, major flooding within eight months, two times, and it's very hard on the citizens. Our home values have gone down. Our insurance, I can imagine, I have people here that have lost quite a bit, and if they have to claim some more on their insurance, the premiums are going to go up, they might get dropped, and so I just need that addressed also. I did call UWO, and someone's going to actually try to contact me, and we're going to do some research on how the flooding is affecting us with our property, with our home values, and I'm going to hand that in eventually when I can get that. We do have elderly and retired citizens on Ninth Street. I have a neighbor right next to me, they've been there forever, and they haven't had flooding in 18 years, and now, within eight months, they've had to have their sons come over and clean their basement out, and it's very frustrating for them. I did accept that it was from the rain in October, and you just deal with it, and we cleaned it up, and I had my insurance help me, but then, within eight months, I saw the street flooding. I'm sitting on my porch at 2:30 in the morning, and I'm thinking, oh, no. And it went to my basement, and I had a foot in my basement. Closer to Ohio, it went six feet in some basements. So this needs to be addressed. Also, I know in the CIP, I read about how Ninth Street is very important, and it is. It is, and I see what eventually they want Ninth Street to look like. Well, we are living there, and we want it to look like that, but if I can't keep my basement nice and I can't focus on keeping my house nice, why would I want the street to just look nice and my basement's still flooding? So this needs to be addressed. Of course, you know, we're focusing on the Sodas District, the Herd, and we want Ninth Street to look nice, and I want to stay there. I want my house to look nice, and I want to do that, but I need my basement to not be flooded, and I want to enjoy coming home. So now, one more question. With all this, do I get a response eventually, or how does this happen?
Yes. Good question. Good question. First of all, thank you for all of the homework and, you know, putting your thoughts in order. This is like great for council to see, and I believe you may have spoken with City Manager Roloff.
Yes.
And I would say that there should be some staff follow-up and perhaps some discussion amongst council. My fellow council members have an interest during the budget process. But in answer to Ms. Weber's question, could staff follow up with regard to where she could locate in the budget documents the items being addressed related to flooding and stormwater?
Yeah, it wouldn't be listed as Ninth Avenue. It would be listed as Stringham Creek, because your area is part of Stringham Creek.
Yep, and I did research that, yes.
And in Stringham Creek, there are two big projects in the 2024 and 2025 capital improvement plan at this time.
Okay, and that would be something we would like to probably try to move up, if we can.
Ms. Weber made it very clear to me at our conversation, and she was as pleasant as she is now.
I'm trying. So, yeah, so, yeah, move up or a temporary solution.
Well, and it's appreciated coming ahead of those decisions instead of after them on those priorities, so thank you again. And am I to assume, then, that the city clerk's document with the 100 signatures goes along with this, with Ms. Weber's?
That is correct.
With us, yes.
Okay. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you to everyone.
Okay, our next speaker is Melissa Brewer-Tesch.
Welcome.
Okay, so, I've never done this before, so, but I just wanted to kind of touch base with, when me and my husband went around and collected all these signatures, it kind of opened my eyes a little bit to, one, all of our neighbors, we met, you know, it was kind of interesting, and, two, there was specific, there was a 94-year-old lady that was kind of bringing up still her fabric and stuff, and it kind of like tugged at my heart a little bit, because she was the only person that lived there, and, well, we were like, okay, well, we're going to get our teenagers over here to help you, but she said she's lived there since 1956, and this has happened more than once, and so that kind of tugged at my heart. But we just bought the house on Ninth, and I've never bought a house before, so, and then, it's been a year, and we put all our stuff downstairs and everything else, but now, this was two floods, so we pretty much lost everything. And it's been a long road. So then we met Marie, and, I mean, a lot of the neighbors came together. I mean, that's probably the only good thing about this, but, and I know that you guys said that there is a project in coming up, but like she said, if you guys have something temporary where you can do something about this, instead of every time it rains, I'm sitting there praying that it's not going to happen again, because our insurance company and our warranty thought we were lying. They're like, are you serious? And then she comes out and she sees, because we had to replace our water heater and our furnace, and we still don't got a furnace yet, because they are saying it's an act of God. But, yeah, so we're fighting with them, but I just wanted to come here and kind of be the speaker of everybody there, because they were kind of like, you guys are really going to go in front of the city and, you know, be our voice? So that's really all I have to say about that.
Thank you so much for doing all of that work and getting to know your neighbors. I'm sure they appreciate it, too.
Yeah, they were kind of shocked, like, what? And hearing all those stories, it was kind of crazy, too. But thank you, guys.
All right, thank you. And I believe Ms. Weber and I, when we spoke on the phone, there was some reference that the coming together with the neighbors, there's also a neighborhood association adjacent to you, the Sacred Heart, and this may be an opportunity to come together on some other things.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is going to be Eric Tesch.
Just to kind of touch on what my wife was saying, this is our second flood. We were, you know, we bought the house last year, and in October, we had a flood. We had kids there, no heat, no nothing. When this flood happened, I decided to call the news and get them involved, and spoke with the news. I also spoke with...
Ms. Robby?
Yes.
Jane Robby?
He brought up maybe the ARPA funding, maybe pulling some money out of there to maybe get Ninth Street done sooner, so we don't have to deal with this, because if it is, I believe you said 2024 or 2025.
Correct, but not for Ninth Avenue. That's just a clarification.
For funding for getting Ninth Street fixed, because if we have to deal with this again, we're going to have to move. And there's a lot of neighbors that are already talking about selling, even if they take a hit on their house, and I ain't paying nobody that's bought their house and paid harder money for it. I'm very happy when we bought our house, and I get up, and I take, sometimes it takes me two days or three days to mow my lawn, but I'm out there mowing my lawn, because it's my house. This is something me and my wife earned, and it's something we upkeep. I might not have always been a law-abiding citizen, but when I met my wife, she turned me around. I've had a job since I've known her, and I pay my taxes, and I expect my kids not to lose things in the basement due to a flood, which, you know, it's a sewer backup problem, and we can't control that. It's not coming from our windows, it's coming out from our sewers. And I did show videos to, I'm sorry, I forget his name again.
Mr. Robby?
Mr. Robby. And I showed him, and I told him that this is coming up out of our basement like this, and there's nothing we can do about it. It's not a sub-pump issue, it's not anything that, you know, that our land is considered it's just, it's a bad sewer system. He said the sewers haven't been updated since, like, I think it was 1936. But I see all these other streets as I'm driving through town today, under construction, not knowing what they're doing, but I'm just saying, I'm seeing the update, and they're updating streets there, but they're not doing it. I think I'm one of your guys' main arteries, which is Ninth Street. A lot of people come through Ninth Street either to come see the Herd or just, you know, the EAA people. Everything comes off of Ninth, and I think with us having this bit, this problem two times in nine months, I think it seriously needs to be addressed, and the citizens need to be there to know when it's going to be done. Thank you for your time.
And if I could just clarify, then, too, the signatures on here, we didn't have addresses, but what are your, what's your address?
635 West Ninth Street.
Okay.
And the last time this happened, we had six feet of water in October, and this time, it was five feet of water. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have no further individuals registered for citizen statements.
All right. Thank you again. All right, we will now move on to public comments regarding agenda items, and I believe we have at least one person joining us virtually on agenda items. Is that correct?
It's my understanding we have one individual on WebEx if there's questions.
Okay, all right.
Okay, but we do have several people that would like to speak.
Yes.
Okay. So for ordinance 21389, I apologize, we have Peter Youngbacher.
And if you are registered to speak, if you could go ahead and step over here towards the wall so that you're right away after Mr. Youngbacher.
The next speaker is Denise Holtz.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you again. Peter Youngbacher, 300 North Main Street. I'm here, actually, today to talk about the day-by-day warming shelter, and I'm not here as a party opposed to it, I'm here as a party very much in favor of it. I have been visiting with a number of folks, and I know Molly is the party on the WebEx. We've chatted, and we spoke Friday about some things, and I sent her material that you have, trying to sort of walk through the process of site selection and try and think about some options that might accomplish the goals of giving Molly's organization the best possible site in the community to perform her mission. And it's a mission that is worth doing. I had the opportunity to be in San Francisco late last week and over the weekend, and San Francisco is the epicenter of the kind of problem that this organization addresses. Just for context, California has 40 million people. It has 600,000 people that are homeless. That's the size of everyone living in Dane County right now. It's an enormous problem. The problem in Wisconsin, fortunately, is not as acute, but it's still a problem, and certainly very acute for those people who are personally impacted by the lack of housing. And it's ironic that I was talking to you a few minutes ago about housing. So housing is what I do and what I try and provide to the community, and I know that there are others that are equally concerned about trying to address this part of the housing continuum problem. And Bill Wyman, last time, touched on it, and I think addressed some of the other services that are being provided along the continuum care that... along the continuum of care that are necessary to get folks back to a point where they can be what they want to be, which is a productive citizen, living in their own housing and leading a life that is better than what their current circumstances might allow. So, to that end, I wanted to offer an option for Molly and her group and for the city to consider. And I know, as I've had conversations with Molly, cost is obviously a big part of her equation. She has a capital stack, she's counting on money from various sources. She has a site that has been proposed to her, which is for a dollar.
I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Youngbacher, if I may interrupt. You're registered under 21389, that's for approval of a zone change. I'm hearing you presenting an option. Is this something that you've discussed with Day-by-Day?
Yes.
Because, okay. This item on the agenda is specifically related to zone change for this parcel?
Right.
Okay.
And I, and I know there were two elements to that. So, we've had conversations with them, and Molly's available to sort of provide some feedback. And I'll try and keep this brief, it's something for consideration. We've presented to you, and I believe all of you have some renderings, and I don't think we can bring those up, because they were incorporated into what is available for the rest of the public to see. But we created a matrix of relation points to a couple of sites, one of them being the site that was proposed on CP and Broad, and another one on a site that's bounded by Jackson, Pearl, Division, and High Avenues.
You can put it up there, Peter. Just put it up there.
Underneath there?
Yes.
And one more minute.
Do I need to press this? So, so the site that we're, we're talking about with Molly is, is located in that boundary that we just talked about. And I tried to show some linkages, and Molly and I talked about some of these linkages and how it impacts her customers or her clients, particularly in the winter. And our proposal is essentially to provide a site on a cost-neutral basis to her. There are members of the community that believe the site should be more centrally located, and they're willing to provide resources to make the site acquisition process revenue or cost-neutral to Molly's group. And I think Molly is considering that option, and I think believes that the access to the Salvation Army, St. Anne's Center, the bus transfer station, again acknowledging that 65% or more of her residents are employed and need transportation, is a very viable and potentially exciting option for her. So, I'm authorized to say that I represent a group of folks that are willing to contribute resources to make the site selection process cost-neutral for the Day-by-Day Warming Center.
Thank you.
So, they can pick the best possible site in the community.
Thank you, Mr. Youngbacher. Again, this item is related to the zone change tonight, so perhaps that discussion could be held with the board from the Day-by-Day. And, and thank you for sharing and trying to be a, another option for them. Thank you.
And I know Molly's available to comment on that as well.
Can I ask a question?
Councilmember Ford?
Just curious, these properties on here, are these in your possession, or what's the?
No, they are not. There is a, there are about six or seven owners. The properties, some of them are vacant or have no prudence on them. Some of them are what I would call older buildings that have not been, have not had the benefit of capital prudence. There are three parcels identified on page three that show you the square footage. The square footage of the site on Broad, and CP is about 65,000 square feet. There's an ability to put a Tetris puzzle together here to accomplish about the same square footage if necessary. And I think the site is probably a little bigger than necessary. Our proposal would be to have the community members contribute the cost of the site, then have the city, through the RDA, do the acquisition process in a manner that they have done countless times throughout their existence, and provide this location on a cost-free basis to the Day-by-Day Warming Center.
Have there been discussions with the city about this?
My discussions were with Molly, and I wanted to make sure that I was not undercutting her initiative to provide a very valuable service to the community. Again, I, I have projects around this project that I propose at this site. I have the new one that we're talking about tonight, you know, half a block away. I have an office building across the street. So, I'm not a NIMBIist, this is not something about not in my backyard. This is in my backyard, and I think it's an appropriate location, given the linkages to the kinds of services that the folks that will be using this facility require.
Thank you.
Any other councilmembers' questions? Thank you.
Okay, for Resolution 21391, we have Denise Holtz, and then Tina Hafeman, I apologize.
Hello, thank you for having me. I'm Denise Holtz, I'm the program director at the Day-by-Day Warming Shelter. As part of my role there is to bring in the supportive services and the programming that our guests use to regain that stability in their lives, so they can get back on their feet and transition on it day-by-day into housing, of course. We have a lot to pack in the five minutes, so I kind of want to go over and touch base with the struggles and challenges that our guests face and that we face in our current facility. So, space is a huge.
I'm sorry, just to interrupt you and just to remind you again, this is for the general development plan and the conditional use permit, so try and keep your remarks in line with that.
Okay, I think they were maybe supposed to switch me downstairs, because when I came in, she thought maybe I should be signed up under the next one. She said she might switch that.
Go ahead.
I'm so sorry.
Sure, no, it's okay.
Okay, very sorry. So, space is a major issue through Day-by-Day. Last summer, we took a lot of time to re-figure our Gateways to Goals program. So, what that is, it is nine gateways for our guests to walk through on a voluntary basis. So, we walk them through the steps for housing, employment, financial stability, health and wellness, sobriety, all of those things. So, to adapt that programming, which we did a great job on, we don't have the space any longer to bring in those programs. We're doing a good job, but they can always be better, and the more programs we bring in for our guests, the more they're going to make those transitions. So, getting them in a space that's thoughtfully built for them and our staff will make a huge difference. Storage for us is major. We currently do not have a space for, to store our donations. We have a storage facility on the other side of town by the outlet mall. So, sometimes in the, in the winter, when we're turning guests away, sometimes we're running out of sleeping bags, because we don't have the room to store them. So, then the staff are running out to these, the storage facility to bring us the items that we're using on a daily basis. Being in the temporary space means that Day-by-Day closes on April 15th each year. So, I can work with these guests for those six months, we can make all the progress manageable for them, but when they do not have overnight shelter, they are at higher risk of falling back on bad habits, addictions, losing their jobs, all these things. And then they spend those six months homeless, come back to Day-by-Day, and it's starting at square one. So, it's tremendously hard for them. So, we all want them to make these transitions in their lives, but we have to give them the tools to do so. In our current space, houses 25 individuals. So, we turned 72 people away this winter. That's 72 times, as Molly has said before, of those people not having anywhere to go. So, really, a 50-bed shelter isn't going to bring more people to this community, it's going to house the homeless people that we have. We have a former guest who moved into housing this past February. And it's heartbreaking, but he takes in our guests that do not get into Day-by-Day in the winter months. And that's, it's not a good situation for him, he's at risk of losing his housing. But even in the summer, we'll let them stay because he loves them and cares for them, and they do not have anywhere else to go. So, then I have conversations with this individual, like, oh, you're really at risk of losing this housing, we need to make this work, but you can't, you, I can't expect him to come out of that homeless situation and make those 180 turnarounds, you know? So, he's doing the job of our city, in my opinion. It's a major undertaking for him, and I don't think it's fair. And we see what a difference that the, the housing makes consistently overnight, because through our hotel, motel voucher program through Day-by-Day, we were able to house some of our guests. One of them actually got a job within that two months, saved the money for his apartment, and moved in. I believe it was last week, Friday, we moved him in. So, he's making tremendous strides. So, it goes that having that roof over their head, we can't expect these individuals to get jobs or get sober if they do not have a place to sleep, cook their meals, take a shower, things like that. But we do have a huge.
Go ahead.
Okay, we do have a huge potential in Day-by-Day with a new lot and with a new building, because we will still be in a central location for services. It's, it's still a central location on Broad and CP. Our guests are down there, they're by the river anyway. We do the annual point-in-time count through Day-by-Day, well, it's bi-annual, but that's actually tomorrow night. And last summer, when we go out and we find these homeless individuals, they're sleeping right by our riverside in their sleeping bags. And Day-by-Day staff can recognize them just by their silhouettes and the belongings that they have. They're sleeping by the rivers, in our parks, under the bridges, all the time. We do these street outreach programs, they're already here. So, we just need to do our best by them and give them the tools and the space they need to take advantage of these programs for themselves. Having more space offers the private and intimate settings for those intakes for better counseling appointments, AA and NA meetings. And this summer, we've ramped up the program to include nutrition and fitness classes. David Ruby comes in as a hypnotist. We have one-on-one AODA and mental health counseling, and that's in addition to the prayer groups, game nights, movie nights that we offer to build those, those bonding experiences, too. Offering the program gives us an opportunity to get in touch with guests that we may not reach if they're just kind of coming in for that overnight shelter and not having other pieces to take advantage of. So, our guests, they're always asking how they can give back to the shelter, we've instituted the cleanup days, they're doing a great job. They make great neighbors, they're happy, and they love this community, and they want to be a part of it. And we just all need to come together and show our support for them. So, that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay, Tina Hafeman, and then Carmen Scott.
Hi, my name is Tina Hafeman, I live at 1307 Washington Avenue. I was in a group of people that helped found Day-by-Day Warming Shelter. And I signed up for number 21, which is the zoning thing, but then when I came in downstairs, they said, do you mean number 23? I said, oh, I don't, I don't get it. So, it seemed like both were about Day-by-Day, so my, I think that my comments, which are, which are short, and now have changed a bit, because I see that there is now some, relatively suddenly some interest in changing the location. Now, in the very beginning of Day-by-Day Warming Shelter, we were given a temporary use permit. And so, we understood that as temporary, and it's been 10 years. 10 years of really knowing that that could not be the place we used forever. So, we've been working on that all this time. As far as the location in the building now, that intense work and that due diligence has been done also for years now, and, and well done, and completely done. And so, I'm, I don't know where this new location is, or if it's existing buildings, or what due diligence has been, or what the people proposing it know about, what is needed, or the dignity of people that are homeless. I don't, I don't know that, because I just heard about it tonight. But I, I understand that the word urgency doesn't come up much, and hasn't come up much, and really needs to. This has been an urgent need for a long time. And if there were people in the city who thought that this isn't a need now, then where have you been? So, I really don't appreciate them coming now to say, oh, here are all your plans and all the things that you've been doing well. Now, we have, we have, we have a better idea, because we know better. I, I do wonder about that. So, naturally, I think the dignity of a building designed for the purposes of sheltering people year-round and for hopefully providing programming and resources for those people in, in relatively the same location as the newly proposed place, which I'm just not quite sure about that, I, I think deserves to go forward. So, that's my position, and that will always be my position on that. Thank you for taking the time to listen.
Thank you.
Carmen Scott.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me, and I think I'm in the same snafu as the others. I registered for 23, when I signed in, they said, you're here for 23, she goes, you're all set. So, I'm happy to sit down and wait.
No, no, no.
If this works, okay. So, I'm actually a resident of River East, and I emailed all of you and shared comments after the initial meeting about rezoning. Well, I live on Otter, I'm on, along with my husband Gary, when he behaves, or, no. So, I'm on Otter, when I walk over to the left, there is CP. I walk a dog four or five times a day, I probably go to the river at least four or five times a week. I have conversations, she is correct, these are our neighbors already. We moved to, moved from Hawaii to Oshkosh, some of you know my story, we were in a car wreck. I sustained moderate brain damage, could no longer do my job. And we made the very real choice, do we stay, go on any kind of benefits we can, and live a very difficult life in a place where we would probably end up homeless? Or do we make a choice to lose the life we had to grasp a life we could? I have a son who's a bankruptcy attorney here in Oshkosh. So, we chose it specifically so that we could start over at what I think is a very advanced age. Oshkosh has been good in many ways. Coming from Hawaii that has a homeless problem that probably rivals San Francisco in that really tiny island, I was very involved with the homeless initiative and committee, whatever you want to call it, there, and it hasn't stopped here. There will always be homeless people, there are individuals who choose to be homeless, there are individuals with mental problems, there are individuals who made bad choices. But as, when Day-by-Day came to our neighborhood, to our core group, where there were maybe 10 to 12 of us, and these are the volunteers, these are the people who do the block parties, the people who canvass, the people who brought rock the block to our neighborhood. So, these are people that are very invested in our neighborhood. We are probably the newest residents, but we hit the ground running. And I will say that the majority who came, kind of came with a, oh, what's going to happen with my property values? What's going to happen with all the progress we've made? For the first time since I don't know when, River East is actually more owner-occupied than not. And that's not to say that renters are bad neighbors, we have great neighbors that are renters, but there, there is a difference. So, we've worked very hard to achieve that status, to clean up our neighborhood, to try and get it on a path. I see Day-by-Day as being a good thing. I, for no other reason, I, I think that's just a super ugly lot. I'd rather have a nice building there than an eyesore. But as somebody who has been bankrupt, who has lost everything, part of me is the heart, but part of me is my community. We made choices to come here. And seeing where we've come in four years as a neighborhood, I, I was thrilled when the committee voted to take this on to this particular committee for zoning. And I, I am thrilled to have our new neighbors in River East. And I think we are the majority, not the minority. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I have no other individuals registered.
All right. And since we do have Molly here, Molly from Day-by-Day, she's here for questions with regard to these items. So, shall we move on to consent, or allow Molly to speak now if she would like to? Counsel?
You consent, and it's up next anyways.
Yeah, all right. Molly, hang in there with us. Thank you to everyone who came and spoke on this item this evening. We will move on to consent agenda items, we'll take a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on consent? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Luberower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Woljakowski?
Aye.
Hallmary?
Aye.
Carrie Six?
All right, and our next item then is item number 21. 21-389, approved zone change for urban mixed-use district, an urban mixed-use district with a planned development overlay to institutional district with a planned development overlay for properties located at the northwest corner of CP Avenue and Broad Street, Plan Commission recommends approval. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion. Deputy Mayor Mublerower.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just before discussion begins, I want to let counsel know and, and those in the audience as well, I won't be participating in 21-389 or 21-391 as a conflict exists and that prevents me from participating in those discussions and votes.
Anyone else? Discussion? Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, I may have pressed that a few too many times. Still adjusting. It's, I would love to get Molly on the, on the horn. I, to ask her a few questions if that's okay.
Mr. Newman?
I'm here. Hi.
Hi, there she is.
Hi, so, so thank you, Molly, for coming. And so thank you, everyone who testified on this as well. Clearly, I think everyone's on board with the need to address homelessness in this community, which is encouraging. And I think that we all want to make sure that this gets off on the right foot and doesn't become a source of division. So with that, Molly, I'd love to hear about your discussions with the group about the second location and what, what you think of that.
So, so I guess I would like to set the record straight. I, I have had conversations. My board president was aware of the conversations because of course, you know, it's my obligation to not leave my board in the dark. I was on the road, was not in town. I, you know, just received the proposed sites tonight about 10 minutes prior to this meeting. I am on Eastern Time, so I'm not sure exactly when they, when they came in. I do not know the viability or the suitability of the site. I was trying to pull it up from my phone. This has not yet been discussed with my board of directors. And I want to make it very clear that I am, although the ED of the organization, we are led by a board of directors and we will need full board support for any alternative site to even be discussed. My comments to those who are calling me frequently and asking me about a proposed alternative site is always that Day by Day is always willing and interested in being a good community partner. That, that is always going to be a priority for us. So I didn't, so I encouraged them to send me their recommendations, encouraged further discussion. We did receive a request, I believe it was yesterday, from a group that wants to meet with us next week, once a lot of us are back in town. And our board president, Gretchen Withers, did schedule that for next week as well. But as of now, our board of directors is set and has voted on the proposed site that you guys are voting on tonight. So I, I hope that clears up anything that, questions that you guys have.
Thank you. Again?
Yeah, could I just add a quick follow-up question? So, yeah, I think it was, it was said tonight by one of the individuals testifying that, that you all did do your due diligence. And I think that is worth pointing out that this is not a city-led project. They're a private nonprofit organization that came to the city and petitioned for this, you know, for this change in zoning, petition for this land, petition for this change in land use. So I guess the, the question for you, Molly, is it, I mean, the only option here, right? If we were going to table this, we would be delaying this for two weeks to allow that move, that, that meeting to happen. So the two questions on that is, one, do you think that would be a productive way to go for you? And two, would that be problematic for your planning?
I spoke, I spoke with Jason Havlick, who presented to you guys at our last meeting. And he made it, and he's unable to be there tonight as well. He made it very clear that he believes that tonight's vote is still very important for us to continue to move forward in case other proposed sites do not work. He is very set on, on his timeline and, and he would really prefer that the vote not, not be pushed back. He did say, and, and again, I, I told him that he's much better at this stuff than I am. That's why I asked him this, these things. You know, he did say, you know, how, if, if there was a circumstance where we decided to go with a different site, that the zone would, you know, the zone change could always be put back or whatever, reversed or whatever it is. But he did believe that tonight's vote was still very important with moving the mission forward, moving the, the building forward. And, you know, the first and foremost is that we really just want to get that year-round shelter built as soon as possible so that we're not sitting in this same circumstance next summer with our guests living out on the streets.
If I could ask Mr. Lyons to step forward. Mr. Lyons, if, if council were to, is, can you see a negative for this zone change going forward tonight, even if the organization decides to do something different going? Because there's still not just the general development plan, but the SIP and that. Is, is there an issue with us?
So the zoning to include the planned development overlay still gives a lot of flexibility to the property for future development, even if Day by Day would not end up being the end user there. And we could always rezone the property back to another use if a new end user for that property was identified. The Housing Authority could initiate that zone change, or City Council itself has the authority to initiate that zone change, to change the property back to the UMU district or another district that'd be appropriate for the end user.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Ford, did I overlook you?
That's why you're the mayor. You asked the question I was going to ask.
All right, other council members? Questions? All right, seeing none, please take the roll.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mublerower?
Present.
Hanson?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried five, one, present.
All right, we will now move on to new ordinances. There will be no action on this item. 21-390, approved zone change from institutional district to institutional district with a planned development overlay for property located at 240 West 9th Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval. And that will come back to us at the next council meeting. We will move on to new resolutions. 21-391, approved general development plan and conditional use permit for an indoor institutional use at the northwest corner of CB Avenue and Broad Street. Plan Commission recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, could we have Mark Lyons up here to answer a few questions, if you don't mind, sir? Could you give us an idea of, of the timeline? And the reason I'm asking is I had a few people reach out to me and were worried about the speed of the project. So I, I think it'd be nice to have clarification about what happens if we approve this in terms of next steps to the SIP.
So if this is approved, the Day by Day Warming Shelter would still have to come back to the city for an SIP or specific implementation plan. That process is about six weeks in time from the time of filing, Plan Commission and on to council. If that SIP was then approved, then they would be able to move forward for construction. So, you know, looking at, at this point, we're scheduling meetings out till September at this point for Plan Commission items. So the earliest this would probably be getting back to council would be late September, early October at this point.
City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to, to, Mr. Lyons answered a, gave a planning answer because that's the planning process with this application. But I think there was, there was a little more to your question, so I just want to highlight a few other things. This property is currently owned by the Oshkosh Housing Authority. The, the way this is intended to work or has been planned to work is the Housing Authority land would get sold to the city slash RDA. Then in turn, the house, the, the city would sell it to Day by Day. That would be the, somebody mentioned the dollar transaction. The dollar transaction can't, can't happen until those other two. I believe Plan Commission has to approve land purchases. So there are, there are multiple things that go. It's not just a matter of it gets SIP approval. This was a regular, you know, private building that we don't, we know little to nothing about aside from what's being submitted. Mr. Lyons doesn't know all the details about, a developer needs to go get financing, a developer needs to get, make sure the architect's ready to go. We probably know a little more because it's more, it's more public, but there's still more to it. Similarly, there's been discussions about city funding for that. I've gone on record saying it's my intent to recommend out of all the ARPA funds and I've stuck my neck out. Why have I stuck my neck out? It's fairly easy when council gives you a directive to work on homelessness. So I kind of took the hint that that was something that was amenable to council. You still have to approve that. As part of that process, I would view this very similar to, say, a TIF development agreement. Mr. Youngbacher spoke about a project. It, it would be very similar to this. We just don't write a check for a million dollars and wish them the best of luck. Even though we have a great relationship with Ms. Butts and I, I trust her completely, we still have things that are called development agreements. And I would see a development agreement being part of this process. None of that goes through planning, but it absolutely needs to get done. So there are many steps along the way. And I've explained that to several individuals in terms of, there's other things that need to get done. So it's, it's, there's more to it than just the SIP. And I wanted to share that, that, that long-winded process to you so that you understand it's more than that. And similarly, if they're seeking county funding, it's the exact same thing. It's just, except it goes through different committees and a different agency. So there's a lot. And the mayor and I talked a little bit about this. So there's more to it than, than just the regulatory Plan Commission approval that Mark normally does with everybody to get a, to get a, a building permit and turn a shovel.
Councilmember Ford?
If you don't mind, sorry, I'm monopolizing. Feel free to, free to come in. No, thank, thank you for those answers. So I've gotten tons of calls on this, both pro and condo location. And then one of the things I've always told individuals opposed to location is you need to give us a tangible alternative. Here, local government, we're not in the process of picking winners and losers. We're here to make sure that the rules are followed. Process is big. Process guarantees fairness. For the first time today, it seems like there's some action towards, towards some type of alternative, which is good. And I encourage, from what you just said, City Manager roll-off, we have time. Even if we approve this tonight, I encourage those that are still interested in changing the location to keep cooperating with Day by Day Warming Shelter. It needs to be something everyone's on the same page on. Also want to point out a couple of things about, about ARPA funds because this has come up. You led me into this, City Manager roll-off. This is more, more geared toward him. He said he stuck his neck out. He did stick his neck out. And I want to assure other nonprofit organizations that we have not taken any vote on the allocation of ARPA funds. I know there's a, there's a perception out there in the community that this million dollars going to Day by Day is a done deal. My expectation is that this is going to be, that million dollars or whatever we're going to give or whatever Day by Day is asking for, that's going to go through the same process as the other requests that went out to every other organization in the community. So I want to reassure people on that, that no decisions have been made. I also want to, and this is also more towards the City Manager, you know, a single project is not, is not an approach, a comprehensive approach to addressing homelessness in our community. It can be part of the plan. It cannot be the plan. So I really hope to see more, more explanation of how this specific project fits into our city's larger approach towards addressing homelessness in this community. Thank you.
Other council members? All right, please take the roll.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mublerower?
Present.
Hanson?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried five, one, present.
All right, and our next new resolution, 21-392, is approved development agreement with Miles Kimball LLC for redevelopment of the Miles Kimball Building. We have a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
All right, discussion on 21-392. All right, seeing none, please take the roll.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mublerower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
All right, we are at council discussion and direction of City Manager and future agenda items. For future agenda items, I do not see anything listed on this version of the agenda. Is that accurate?
Nothing that was added. So certainly, if there's anything you would like on a future agenda, certainly let us know and we'll be happy to put it on. I have something under announcements about a future meeting as well, but we have the second budget workshop for August 31. And these are just to, keep them on your calendar.
Okay, and future meetings and workshops, looks like we have our second budget workshop August 31 at 5:00 PM for early projections and directions on priorities from council. And third and fourth budget workshops, October 18th and 19th. Does that work for all council members or are we good on times and dates?
Yeah, the October one's just like all day.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, and for the public, you're welcome to see our full budget calendar. It is posted out on the website, on the City of Oshkosh website for, I believe it's got its own page, right? The, the budget page with all of the documents and our calendar?
Once the, yeah, the calendar's already out there and the.
Is the, is the, are the draft CIP documents that council's been receiving through the workshops also available on that page? I've been asked.
I believe they are, and I'm looking over at Mr. Van Gogh, but I believe those are.
Okay.
Public Works has their own page with a lot of detailed CIP.
With an interactive map, I might add.
Yeah, there's a lot more to that one because of the, the level of detail. And if you haven't seen it already, it's there for you.
All right, wonderful. And then council member announcements and statements. Reported council liaison for boards and commissions. Councilmember Wojciechowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yesterday, Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee met. Specifically, one topic that I just wanted to touch on was the chief Oshkosh statue. I know this has been a, an issue that's been going on for quite a long time. And, you know, there was just sentiments from members on the committee that this issue has been taking too long. And I agree. So I'm just hoping that, you know, I'm not sure which, I know you're on the Parks Board, but I'm not sure who's on the.
Yeah, we didn't meet last month.
The other one, yeah. Just hoping that we can get this figured out and, you know, resolved because I think, you know, it's, it's worthy of that attention. And the sooner the better. Thank you.
Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, Plan Commission met and most of the stuff is things we talked about tonight. But we also had a workshop about the new Parks building and it looks awesome and it's sorely needed. So that's something to look forward to moving forward.
Councilmember Hanson?
For Public Arts and Beautification, we are on track for our Into the Night event coming up in October. We are looking for vendors to supply food and food trucks and different things for our event. It's coming soon. There will be a new Lake Fly project at the Parkview Health Center. They're getting one of the refurbished ones out there for the Parkview guests to enjoy.
All right.
New, new art in the community.
Fun things, exciting things, yes. And let's see here, I have to report the East Central Wisconsin Regional Comprehensive Planning Committee met last week. We'll have our full quarterly commission this Friday. That is in New London. And the strategic planning for the region 2045, where basically we were discussing some of the survey items and some of the higher-level items to address in that. Certainly, public is welcome to give their input as well. That's all I have to report. Councilmember Wojciechowski?
I just have a question for Councilman Hanson. We, at our, I think it was our last meeting, we got that really quick explanation. I forget, it was from the, I'm blanking on it, but it was basically things that our city can do, you know, to attract new people, you know, all the whole list of things. We got a whole report on it, the guy who came in and did a study of our city, basically. I'm wondering, was that report sent to your committee? Because I feel like that would be appropriate, that they got it.
It's not, but I will bring it into it on the next.
Yeah, I just think it'd be a great idea. I think they're the appropriate committee to take that on and maybe if they like some of the things, they can make recommendations, but I don't know.
I think you're talking about the destination assessment and that's available. There is a link out there for that video. It's a two-hour video. It's very informational. But I believe they've got some higher executive-level survey or summary out there as well from Amy Albright and the CBB. Amy Albright and the CBB.
And I'm sure Ms. Albright would be more than happy, but she can't do a 10-minute presentation, as we learn.
No, 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 no. But she did pretty darn good.
Yeah. The CBB and the bid are really focused on that, and we're working with them as a city.
And this is, as the representative for the Parks Advisory Board and also kind of following up on Councilmember Wojciechowski, we did not meet in July. That item is on our August agenda. And some of the other folks who have an interest in that, who have spoken previously at DEI, will also be back in August for that. So just to let you know. All right, and next, City Manager announcements and statements.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to have the city clerk, she gave me a little briefing just before the meeting regarding the brass rail. You may recall that we originally intended to have the hearing this evening, but there was a, reaching the owner was difficult, to say the least. But Ms. Ubrich has a brief report on that. Looks like we're going to be ready to go next time.
Yes, just prior to this meeting, we had, he had communication with Angela, and he has confirmed that he will be available for the August 10 council meeting. So we will move forward with the documents for that hearing.
So we still need to serve them, but it looks like we're going to be okay for the next meeting. So there's that. There is a memo in your packet regarding professional services agreement to begin the process to do environmental reviews that are associated with our 2022 capital projects. We get started now and helps us get a head start on, get moving on the design. So happy to answer any questions about that one if you do. ARPA funding, we had a few little discussion this evening. Staff is putting together a summary that I would like to put on the next agenda for you to see just kind of where they're coming from. Few non-surprises based on discussions, but there's a broad range of other ones. The one that you mentioned to me this morning, I did receive from Advacap, so that's in the packet as well. A variety of them, just identifying the different categories.
And I'm sorry, when did you say we're getting that packet?
I want to get it to you for the next, I want to have it on for discussion at the next council meeting. And that's really just more, here's what we have, summarize it for you, give you a feel for what areas are there. And then just getting, getting some dialogue from the council and where, in general, not specifically, not entity A or person A.
But we'll get the packet ahead of that discussion.
Yeah, that would be, yeah. At a minimum, in your packet, your agenda packet, Friday before, if I can get it to you earlier, I'm more than happy to get it to you sooner. So that's the latest update on that. Little commercial message for National Night Out, because that's next Tuesday. The city clerk doesn't notice it, even though you're probably more just kind of moving targets and everything. If you get four, oh, once you get into a neighborhood association and they see your smiling face, you will be there for a while. So to have four of you all in one location is probably a tall order, but the city clerk is planning for that unlikely event just in case. So you are welcome to go to any of the neighborhood associations of your choosing. Keep, you know, if you sit down, you'll never leave. I just, just piece of advice from the past. The chief, I think...
The first gentleman keeps me on cue. I'm allowed 10 minutes at each in order to try and cover all of them before they end.
That is awesome advice. You need a handler to move you along.
You need a handler.
Whether it's your spouse or whomever, you need somebody to be with you. So find your buddy and move quickly. Outstanding issues, just give me a second. We have the outstanding issues there for you. We've updated a few things there for you. I will say that I had an interesting discussion with some representatives of some Milwaukee area municipal, Milwaukee area legislators who are interested in the municipal services payment program. So even though it died at the legislature, this budget round, all is not lost. So we're keeping the ball rolling, and Mr. Van Gompel and I provided some information. I think we, again, keeping that ball in the air. Happy to answer any questions you may have about that. And then COVID-19, someone just sent me a message today, please tell everybody to get vaccinated and mask if you're not vaccinated. Certainly great advice, passing that along. Chief Stanley is here. He spoke with Health Director Guerin today, just about, there is a slight uptick. Coincidentally, Madam Mayor, the discussion that you had with me this morning, unsolicited, Mr. Robbie came in, and our evidence of us collecting at the wastewater plant, providing it to UW-Milwaukee, there is evidence of an uptick in our sewage concentration that indicates the presence of COVID.
Predictive prior to symptoms, right?
It's very predictive, and it has gone up quite a bit. It's not as high as it was, say, last year, but it's certainly, it's gone up a great deal in the last month. So that's just letting everybody know, all this stuff still applies. The pandemic's not over. We've given it a break. Let's not give it too long of a break. Let's tell it break is over and get out of here. But county health is still encouraging people to get their vaccination if they haven't done so already, especially the 12 to 18-year-olds who are getting ready to go to school. There was something put out today with the different vaccines about the latest date you can get it and still have your child vaccinated before school starts. That's like this week for Moderna and next week for Pfizer, if I got that right. And then Johnson &amp; Johnson's later, because it's a one-and-done. So certainly we want to encourage people, check the county website, vaccination.
And testing. Testing is still happening, just so folks know. I had to do a little digging to find the Winnebago County list of testing sites available, but we do still have testing sites available. Some of them are walk-in, but a number of them are by appointment rate.
Registered.
Registered, okay.
So, yeah, all that still goes on. So thank you, Madam Mayor. That's another point to keep raising. So it's just continuing the message, and we're not done yet. It's not over till it's over, so we're going to keep plugging away. That's all I have.
All right, should we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. We need it. Thank you.